Okay, welcome back, everybody. Today's Monday, November 20th, we're here in our afternoon session. Initial agenda item is not an action item. This is a workshop on development agreements. Cindy kind of sent us out a paper copy of what we're trying to discuss today. So I'm going to turn it over to you and kind of let you run this through.
Okay. So this is just a workshop to try to get some guidance on what our policy is going to be for development agreements so that we can maintain some sort of consistency. Kind of my initial thoughts are if we aren't going to do development agreements, then we might want to do impact fees. If you want the same thing applied to each and everything without any sort of negotiation, you might as well just do impact fees because then it's just to set them out and you just apply it like we do the fire impact fee.
We kind of turned that down here last year when that lady was here.
Right.
When we did the fire, we said, no, we didn't want to do impact fees.
Right.
That might have been a mistake, I don't know, but...
Well, that leaves it open to these development agreements. On this sheet of paper, on the stuff you got in your packet, I did list the parts of the Valley County Code that allow development agreements, and that's that 9-9-9, and then And then I also listed the portion of the state statute that talks about, you know, 676512D that talks about development agreements. And most of it would be under number six, which says requiring the provision for onsite or offsite public facilities or services. So I believe that between our Valley County Code and the state statute, we can do development agreements for site-specific applications. With that being said, I'm looking for direction on how you want to apply it. I had just kind of brainstormed a bunch of questions or thoughts to you about when should we do development agreements? Should we do them for subdivisions over 10 lots? Should we do them for two-lot subdivisions and above? Should it be any division of land?
Let's go back and talk about the impact fee question first. So if I'm thinking impact fee versus development agreement, impact fees are set. You cannot waive them. Development agreements are something that is more easily negotiated. And so in my opinion, to do a development agreement is better, just simply because it allows us more leeway, if you will, and helping those that only have two lots versus, you know, if we set an impact fee at $5,000, no matter what you're doing, you're going to be paying that impact fee. And so I think it just gives us more opportunity for conversations with whatever the person is doing and allows us to waive it off, which impact fees you can't. So impact fees are impact fees.
So kind of flexibility in the application based upon impacts for that specific use?
Correct. And if somebody wants to put together, I mean, I'm just sitting here thinking about, you know, if they have a very high use, industrial use, then an impact fee would still only be $5,000, or maybe it's something different for commercial. But if they have 100 trucks a day coming in and out of a facility, we're going to charge them more of a development agreement because of the actual use. So to me, it goes more toward the use of the, instead of just flat.
I agree with you. Yeah, I think that's, my thing is, I like the flexibility, you know, because we're good, there's so much gray area in all these applications that you charge a 200 lot the same, or a 500 lot subdivision, I mean, there's...
So it just really blends into our CUP process?
As I've, as I've kind of sit and listened to a couple of presentations for proposed development agreements, and then also going back to when Mr. Millman was here a couple of months ago, there, we're kind of, we're kind of got one toe in one group and one toe in the other. And so that, I think, is important, that we, we talk about that here today, we get a much more clear plan going forward. But we, you know, we used the parametric study to identify what, what a typical cost or an impact cost would be, and we still are using the wrong terminology. If we're not going to use, if we're not going to do an impact fee, we can't, shouldn't be using CIP or impact fee or any of that kind of thing in our negotiations or discussions with, with developers. We need to be consistent with our terminology, and I see that still popping up quite a bit, the use of CIP, and still kind of using that same concept that was used when we previously implemented an impact fee, that we have certain regions throughout the county that will be charged this amount. We, if we're going to go away from impact fees, then we've got to stop saying that to...
So do we lose that data from parametrics on determining that value?
No, I still think it's valuable. It gives you a basis for the negotiation. Okay, when we did this study, parametrics said, when you have so many lots, you know, it's going to create so many vehicle trips, and that, and those vehicle trips are going to have an impact to the tune of somewhere in the neighborhood of about $6,000 per lot in a subdivision. That's only a data point. That's not, that's not, what we're doing is we're saying, if you have a four-lot subdivision, we're going to take four times six, and that's what it is, and that, and I think that's what Steve was saying when he said, when he came here, he says, if you're going to do an impact fee, you're not following the statute. That looks a lot like an impact fee, so...
Well, I agree with that, Brian. I mean, is there a disparate impact, because like in the parametric stuff, I mean, one of the zones may be a $2,500 per lot, the other one's $6,500 per lot. I never figured out their formula to come up with that.
It's the proximity to sources to work on the roads, to basically where the pits are.
And I would...
Or conditions of road.
I would draw your attention to the section of Idaho Code that Cindy put in your worksheet here, 6512. And if you, if you want to, what, what I would really like to see and would really encourage you to do is when, when you're considering a development agreement, that you look at these eight factors and identify which of these eight we're trying to minimize related specifically to the project. Most of them are going to be subsection eight, requiring mitigation of effects of the proposed development upon service delivery of any political subdivision, including school or exclamation. That might be requiring an impact, mitigation of the effects of the impacts on the roads nearby. And then make a site-specific finding that this particular development, this particular proposal will, will have this many lots, this many vehicle trips will be generated a result of that. And this is where Jeff and probably Cindy come in to determine what, what the net value of that offsite, that offsite mitigation will, will be. So it, it might be 6,000 per lot, it might be significantly less, but it would be, it would be dependent upon what you all find the proposed impact of that development would be on the local roads in that area.
Brian, I'm confused a little bit, because I don't know how many years back it was, we tried to do this, and we didn't have the raw data. And so we heard parametrics to come in and do the CIP process and figure out so that we had raw data that would back us up.
What you were doing back then was an impact fee.
I don't remember that. Well, I don't know.
Not the same impact fee. It was a CIP, basically, I mean, it was a different... An impact fee would be the analysis of existing infrastructure.
We couldn't do it until we had specific data, says this is what that impact is going to cause you. Otherwise, we were going to get our butt kicked in court. Now, like, you know, number eight talks about school districts. We don't know what the impact is going to be to a school district. So how, we don't have any studies or any science to...
All, all you have focused on so far is the minimization of the impacts to the local roads.
Roads.
So we're, we're not including any kind of a, any kind of a mitigation for schools or any other political subdivision that's specific to roads. But that's where, that's what I would like to see, is finding that, you know, if it's a two-lot subdivision, as an example, you are going to have to have, have a conversation with the developer about what you expect the impacts are going to be of a two-lot subdivision on a certain, on a certain road. And it would obviously be significantly less than a much larger subdivision.
So me, I mean, we would be looking at one, six, and eight for the most part, but if we just tell Cindy and Jeff to make a decision on this, it's arbitrary. I mean, there is nothing to substantiate their request unless we come up with some kind of a fee structure. It is, if you're doing a two-lot subdivision, it's $2,000. If you're doing a four-lot subdivision, it's $4,000. You know, I mean, how do you come up with something that they can actually look at? Because they're going to use the CIP data, if not...
The parametric study, that's the value of the parametric study, is it gives you the framework to do that.
Okay. So still using that framework?
Absolutely. I am not saying throw that out.
Okay.
I'm saying continue to rely on the parametrics data, but that's only one data point in your process. Other, other information that's really important is where the location of the development, the needs of the roads that it's going to impact, and what, what this group is going to determine the offsite, the offsite impacts of that development have on those surrounding roads.
Based upon the use.
Based upon use. And yeah, parametric study is extremely valuable in, in giving you the framework of, here's kind of the starting point of how we're going to make that determination.
So let me throw this out here, just for example, trash. You get a two-lot subdivision, somebody's going, they're going to have to pay, what is it, 90 bucks a year for the trash? We should be doing a better job of trying to figure out if it's actually $90 or if it's maybe more. That make sense? We'd never really done that. We've just taken the budgeted budget and divided it by the households, and that's what the fee was, with a little, little extra left. You know, like, like I said, the schools, I have no idea what that cost would be.
I think we have to be really careful without being arbitrary on every decision.
Right.
Because if it's not the $90 that's for trash, then by all, that just keeps everybody equal. My thought is that when you're looking at it, like on a two-lot subdivision, they are using an existing road that all their neighbors are also using. So that use isn't, you know, all that large. So we think, we shrug and say, oh, well, it's only two lots. Well, then the next guy does two lots, and the next guy does two lots. So what we do is we catch ourselves into a time warp of looking back going, wow, we really should have started that at the first two-lot subdivision and improved that road as we go. So I think it is important, even though we, we kind of shrug and go, it's only two lots, but we are impacting other development in the area, not only by the existing use, but whatever happens with that parcel in the future.
So in the past, we have used a development agreement, capital contribution agreement, to assess the impacts for schools.
Really?
Yes. For West Rock, Camrock?
Did they have to donate something to a school?
Yes.
Interesting.
Yes, because they were anticipating dual language issues.
How did you guys come up with that figure?
It was a negotiate, the school talked to them about it.
Okay.
And what the school recommended and, and what, you know, they, they came to a negotiation and agreed upon something. So depending upon the application, what the development is, is will determine, you know, if we assess or negotiate an agreement for schools or fire departments or pathways or something else, it all depends upon that site-specific use. I can anticipate that if it's a development agreement for, you know, a five-lot subdivision somewhere in the county, we will use the projected improvement costs already prepared by parametrics in our analysis. And, and, you know, Jeff can, you know, maybe come up like he has been doing with other things they can do so that there's, they can do projects or they can give us cash.
In-kind stuff.
In-kind stuff. So...
I, I like that example, because I think it's really illustrates an important point of what we're trying to talk about here. And that is, when West Rock came in with a concept and a proposal, the, the question was raised, well, that, that's going to have a very specific impact on the local schools. And that's what a development agreement is, is how do you mitigate what the anticipated or expected offsite effects of that specific proposal on those local schools? And the same is true for the road development agreements. It's what specifically is, is the, is the issue that you expect that development's going to create on the road? Is it, we've got, you know, it's a dirt road, we've got drainage problems, and we have, you know, failing culverts, and just putting two or four, or five, or 10 more vehicle trips on that road is going to accelerate the deterioration of that? So, so now we're talking specifics. Now we know, you know, here's a project that needs to be done here, putting more road or more cars on that road is going to necessitate the replacement of a culvert. I'm just picking something as an example. So now we're talking very specifically about, just like we are with West Rock. And that's kind of what I'm hoping to see, instead of just having this flat $6,000. Then, then people don't get confused that that was, that was an impact fee in disguise. That's where I'm, I'm afraid we're...
Oh, I see what you're trying to get, is kind of out of that arbitrary situation we're in, okay. Because I know one time we talked about, what about the impact on employees in this facility?
Sure.
If we need more billing inspectors, if we need more appraisers, is there part of that should be considered? Now, if you had, let's say, a 320 lot subdivision coming in, you know we're going to need more billing inspectors?
Right.
That was considered as part of the West Rock, was the impact to the courthouse. They gave us so much money for three years for that delay in when we would start receiving the property taxes. Because property taxes and building permit fees should pay for that, and they will. Your building permit fee is more than it actually costs.
And so instead of charging them a, an impact fee or a development fee on billing inspectors, you're just hoping that the revenue from those will hire you more billing inspectors?
Yeah, the lag, they paid for the lag. West Rock did. They, they paid the three years of lag in order for the property tax to kick in.
And that's really what an impact fee is. It's impacting you immediately, and...
What you get called an impact fee.
I know, but if we went that direction, though, it would be the same thing. You'd, you'd get the funds upfront in order to create the structure, and then your taxes take over from there.
That, that was part of the development agreement for, capital contribution agreement for Camrock. Same kinds of analysis were done for Jug Mountain, as far as, you know, there was anticipatory fire station in the Lake Fork area, that type of thing. And we talked a lot about schools, but it's the larger PUDs that go into those other impacts.
And, and that's, you know, that's, in, in my mind, the, the value of and the purpose of retaining parametrics to do the study was, once you've identified, here's what the deficiencies are on, I mean, we're picking on roads, but there's lots of, there's lots of services that may be impacted by development. But the reason we, the reason we retain them to do this work is, once you've identified the deficiency, then that study will give you the information to accurately assess that particular development. So you're not overcharging or undercharging them based on the impact. That's, that's the value of the study to me is, because they're all going to say, everybody gets to use this road, why do I have to pay, why do I have to pay and nobody else does? Well, that's what that study addresses, is that you're putting new vehicle trips on the road every day, and those vehicle trips will have this amount of impact, and we value it at this much. So, so that gives you a basis for making that financial determination of what that impact value is. That's all it is. It's not an impact fee, it's not this, you know, this uniform, everybody gets charged exactly $6,000. You have to actually do a site-specific analysis and, and then make that, make that determination.
So Brian, for instance, like Corinna Valley, that many lots, that much development, all within a two-year period, should we have talked to them about an, a fee for the impact on billing inspectors and appraisers and all that?
You could have.
We should have.
You could have, yeah.
Absolutely.
Because you're not limited to just roads. You have, really, you have the authority under 6512, 6512 to determine the impact, mitigating the impacts of all services provided by political subdivision. So it's not just the county, it would be schools and fire districts and, and others.
I don't know how much that building permit's going to be, but again, that's paying for part of your impact upfront. And then, long-term, you know, once it's built, then two years, the property taxes are going to go...
And that's the balancing test that you do in these negotiations, is that new development brings in new tax revenues as well.
So I'm going to throw another one out, because I've been thinking about this a lot. If perpetually it gets a permit to go back in the backcountry of mine, should we be asking for a pretty substantial bond to protect our road from Highway 55 all the way back? Because in 10 or 15 years of heavy truck traffic, I know what that road's going to look like.
I did put that in a request from the county on the EIS. So we'll see if they include it.
But, but see, before, what I'm trying to say is, we had to have specific studies done in order to come up with that fee, otherwise it was arbitrary and capricious and it got thrown out. How do I know what that bond's going to be?
Sure.
You know?
Engineers.
$25 million bond, a $50 million bond, what would it take to rebuild that road?
And that, you know, I, I don't know the answer to that. I think that's a pretty technical question, based on the way that vehicles, the number of trips they're going to be making, and then, you know, engineers looking at it, say, this will reduce the useful life of the town for X number of years, and it costs so many, so many dollars per mile to replace it.
Or, well, a, a performance bond, to bring it back to its whole completion as part of a development agreement. So at the end of their activity, they have to make sure the road is the same as it is now.
And they have the option of either cashing in the bond, giving us some money, or fixing the road, or fix the road, right?
Yeah, and that should be part of your development agreement.
I don't remember what we put on them for, you know, as part of their application. I guess I've...
They only really have, they have some CUPs for some housing. There will be another application, and probably what you should do is a development agreement to include all of the CUPs, is, is something like that, instead of individual development agreements for each of the...
Were you doing anything, Cindy, on the Riconoider Building in Scott Valley?
We did not for the road, but you're still waiting on the housing portion.
Right.
Was there any way to, you know, I keep listening to all this, I'm going, my head's hurt. So I know you're saying not standardize 6,000 period, doesn't work. But when it comes to us, you guys have already worked all those nuances out before it ever comes to our table.
I, I would disagree with that.
Well, how do we, how are we supposed to delineate, you know, the pits that far from where this development is? How much is that going to cost? And there's no way we know this stuff.
Well, I, I, I think that's an important point. Maybe we need to spend some time talking about improving the process so all of the people that need to be involved in the negotiation for this kind of understands what their role is, how we can make this process easier, easier for those sitting, participating in this conversation, but primarily easier for the people who are going to be impacted by this. Because I, you know, I think back over the last three or four months, you have, you had some, some development agreements presented to you that are not a subdivision of land at all, just a new, a new building permit, a two-lot subdivision, three lots, I mean, you, I mean, just kind of every, every different scenario that presents some unique and maybe different challenges than the others do have, have come before you, and I think that's going to continue. So I, I would like some clarification on how you want those things done. Because I do think that what's being presented to you is, here's a concept, here's a proposal, you know, I think Jeff has communicated to the developer, here's what, you know, the parametrics study says, but then it's kind of in your lap and you're getting confronted with it cold. And so if we can, if we can improve that process, then I think it would be...
So are you like, maybe instead of coming to us for, for an exact figure, we have four lots, ding, times whatever that dollar amount is, this is what the, the fee should be, this maybe should come back as a range? I don't know, I'm trying to offer solutions here because...
So we had that lady a couple of weeks ago come in off of Fleming.
Mm-hmm.
That's kind of a good example of, all she was doing was splitting a lot.
She wasn't only splitting, she was just building another house.
Adding a house.
That's ridiculous.
Is there really a change in use there?
I kind of gave her the parametrics numbers. I go, before we go any farther, we need to get in front of the commissioners and talk to them, because this one's a little bit different. Like Brian said, every...
Every one.
This one doesn't match this one, this one doesn't match this one, this was 320, this is five. What, what do we do? Is this going, in-kind might be a little different than, might come up to a different dollar amount than the cash contribution?
I just think that it's a, it's a change in use. I mean, even though she was doing an ADU and not splitting her property, she's still putting additional cars on that road that is impacting her neighbors. And so whether it's a lot split and a change in deed, you know, doesn't really matter. It's still a change in use. So how do you tell somebody if they have a two-lot subdivision that they're going to be different than an ADU? There is no difference when it actually comes to the number of people that are driving on that road and impacting the neighbors.
Well, the other thing that I want to stress, too, is I, I think it's important that you don't let the little one and two-lot splits skip on this, because it's like cancer, little ones are going to eat us up before we get to the big ones. Everybody should be paying the same.
So once again, as we've all said, final decision is yours. Do we need to bring these people in before we even start discussions with them? Are everybody's on the same page?
I don't know about bringing them into us, because we don't know any more than you do, Jeff. I don't know what CIP, what it is for each CIP, and I could find it.
Right, well, I don't either.
But to me, you come in with a, hey, here's our suggested development agreement cost.
I think we need to propose something so that we have somewhere to start the discussion.
Kind of like we've been doing.
Yeah. But we need to do it earlier in the process than later in the process.
Because the lady that came in and wanted her building permit that day...
Right.
So we were put, you know, in a difficult situation. She is in a difficult situation because she didn't know she was going to have this expense coming in. That needs to be mitigated. You know, first of all, it needs to be, at least come to us with a little bit more time or whatever, so we can research the issue. Because when you're bringing those in and saying, this is the cost that's been set, I have no idea, first of all, I didn't know where Fleming was until I pulled it up on the map, but I have no idea how far it is from your pit. I have no idea what the surrounding neighborhood looks like at all. So we need to at least have some kind of a conversation, instead of just, this is what we want to charge. Well, why? What is it?
What I'm hoping to avoid is having a, a person or a developer standing here at the podium and have Jeff say, well, we met, here's what we've agreed to, and have two of the three of you, or three of the three of you, say, we hate that plan, we do not like that idea, we are not going to approve that. Or put you in a position where you feel like you have to approve something that you do not like or want.
And there's a perfect example to that.
When it was on Angus or wherever it was off Loomis, and the fact they were, they were in front of us on the day that we were supposed to be approving it, and they were already paving it. And we would not have approved that, Jeff. We would have made offsite improvements, we would never have accepted just onsite improvements in that scenario. So that's a perfect example.
So how do we fix that? So, so that doesn't put Jeff in the hot seat or you guys in a really uncomfortable spot that, you know, most of the details of this can be worked out. We have general concept of... We have general concept of the things that you're comfortable with, of the direction of the policy that you want to have implemented in the county, and Jeff and Sinda and I have clear direction on how we can go execute that policy in a way that is going to be legally defensible, that's my number-one priority, but two, is consistent with the policy. And we're, and we're within that, we're within that framework of we're treating everybody the same, and, and, you know, nobody gets an unfair advantage or, or whatever, just because it's, you know, it's odd or weird.
But if we, if we look at this, I think we've really got kind of three different things that we've got to solve. First of all, it's just the standard CUP process. Do you get that development agreement during the P and Z process? Now, like a subdivision, and even a PUD, you would do that after the concept was approved, but before final plot, I'm assuming.
I would, they would, they need the CUP in order to have the RDA discussion, because if they're not going to get a CUP, why have the RDA discussion?
Well, you wouldn't want to do the RDA during the CUP process. You'd have to get through the CUP completely, and then talk about the RDA.
That's what we've been doing.
Because the RDA is a condition of approval in your CUP. It's one of the, it's one of the conditions. That's what, that's what triggers Jeff.
However, if I'm a developer, I may not even want to get that conditional use permit if it's going to cost me a million dollars' worth of road infrastructure, because I can't make it pencil. So now you've approved potentially a land use, where the developer goes, I don't want to move forward, I can't do this.
Well, they should have a pretty good idea, and they should be talking with Jeff. I would hate for them to get their development agreement before the P and Z has even looked at it, because that's you guys approving the application ahead of time.
I agree with that, but that's where Jeff goes back to a range of some kind. I mean, the commissioners, you're, you're going to have to negotiate with the commissioners. This is what has been proposed on our use fee, you know? I mean, they could decide something else, but there has to be something out there that tells the developer, this is a potential fee.
And that's what I want to write up as a policy, that's, is, is what's going to happen after this, hopefully, is the policy, once I have direction.
If you were a sophisticated developer, you're going to anticipate that, and you just saw that come in front of you, that part of their application package was, we are proposing a development agreement, a voluntary development agreement that's, that's being volunteered or proposed by, by the developer, and you will probably see that with larger subdivisions.
And that this code is in there? These are the things we're going to be looking at, to give them a heads up that this could have a larger impact. It'll be put their hand out.
So for smaller developers, or, or, you know, I think what you've seen recently is.
They use it that way.
Family members who have inherited property, because grandma or grandpa passed away, and now they're dividing it up amongst the kids. If you can get a policy in place with, here's the criteria, and, and here's what to expect, maybe even an FAQ document, that's, that's going to help, and that's going to, that's going to go a long ways too, in helping Jeff and Sinda and myself follow a protocol that will result in some more consistency and a better presentation when we get in front of you on, in a more formal application.
Let's use that as an example, because we've had, which one? Three of them? Well, just family split, whatever that looks like. We've had three of them recently, all different land sizes, and they were furious that they had no intention of selling. Well, the one in front of us that's doing the work has no intention of selling. We have no idea whether that's true or not true, first of all, but secondly, the siblings can do whatever they want with their property. There are no deed restrictions whatsoever. And so placing something upon them at the time that they're doing this, I think is appropriate. Totally up to them, if they want to sell, they want to do something further, whatever. The last one with the Shaw family, and giving them some credit back for that large land donation, was, I think, the appropriate thing to do, and, but then that goes back to that flexibility. Because we have no idea, the five hundred acres north of there could go on market tomorrow. I have no idea. And so we keep thinking these are just splits between family and moving on, but that's just not, not necessarily true. We don't control it.
But still, it doesn't matter. I mean, if they split, great, you know, we still have that, whatever that development fee we threw on there, and if they decide to sell, well, that's their prerogative.
Right.
And, you know, the next person might make a, you know, fifty-lot subdivision out of that five hundred. You just never know.
If you really think about it, the more they break up a family ranch to smaller parcels, the more chance it's going to be developed.
Absolutely.
But eventually you'll get that revenue. However, I have kind of an issue, a heartburn issue with the fact that if you give us six points, whatever acres a Shaw gave us for right-of-way in there, that should be just the cost of doing business. You shouldn't get any kind of credit towards future development agrees, projects, which is what we did, we gave them, what was it, twenty-year, a hundred thousand dollar towards future stock. To me, that's just the cost of you guys breaking up your family farm, or you got to give that land to the county, so that you'll have a legal road going through there, and there is no credit. I don't know, maybe I'm wrong, I'm.
Well, that, that is, that is definitely an issue that needs to be flushed out in the policy, and we have obviously takings, concerns that need to be considered. It, it's, I mean, you have to, you just always have to remember that the general rule is, if you are going to acquire a parcel of ground, you have to pay fair market value for it. Now, if, if you are requiring it as a mitigation of a development impact, then that doesn't necessarily trigger takings, but the, those are all unique situations.
And that's what we've done in the past, hey, you're going to subdivide this fifty acres, part of the requirement says we need a seventy-foot right-of-way in the road, and you're going to donate that. Or in, like, in the Shaw instance, they weren't going to develop, they were just trying to figure out how to divvy it out to the heirs. And that's a huge problem for a lot of big ranches, is that, that's an issue.
Because if we can.
Not easy.
If we can include as part of the process a takings analysis, so when they do come in front of you, you know, and, and all of them's going to be unique. There's not going to be one that's going to be, that's going to be the same, so, but, but there does need to be an analysis, so you can be confident that what you are requiring isn't going to end up in, in a court with the, with the takings claim. And that, there's no, there's no guarantee, or, but, but at least you, you've got the information in front of you. That's, that's, I think everybody's sitting on this down here, that's their goal, is to get accurate, complete, and really comprehensive information, so ultimately you can make an informed decision. And what it's felt like in the last several has been, you've kind of been, have, kind of been put in a position where you have to make a, make a decision on the fly.
Very bumpy.
And that, that, I think, leads to some problems.
See, and I'd go, for me, you know, sitting at this desk, you know, for me, I, I want things streamlined, so that the decision is a whole lot more simple than trying to figure out what we're supposed to do, and is it legal? It should already be kind of, in my mind, it's kind of more streamlined, and time it gets to me, it's easier for me to make a decision, because it's already been through the professional heads that are sitting down there.
Do you guys want my response, that I write all these CUPs? Because I, I write my response, or my recommendations, as soon as I get the CUP, which is within one or two days of them sending their Lori getting me that information. I write the P and Z, I give Sinda and Lori my recommendation, it's usually one, if not three, different recommendations for impact.
Well, my thing for, for you guys, all of you, is the fact that you're the one that's going to have to deal with this developer, and there are probably quite a few that don't want to hear this. How do we fix that issue so that you guys are always in the hot seat?
I mean, do you want me and my recommendation, usually recommendation one is right-of-way, recommendation two is based off of whatever CIP unit they're in.
But you can't call it that.
But I don't give them dollar amounts, so they have no clue on this.
That's not transparent.
Eight thousand or three hundred thousand dollars that we're going to be asking for.
I think you have to give them a range, you know, it could range from eight thousand to ten thousand dollars a lot, you know, whatever that looks like for that subdivision. I think you've got to give them something. I mean, that's kind of, that's arbitrary, though, then, too, because if you give them a range, it's not the same for everybody.
Well, that.
And the guy that pays ten's going to be madder than the guy that paid eight.
I, but here, here's my hangup on that, is that i- i- it's arbitrary if it isn't specific to a mitigation or an offside effect that we've identified that's specific to that development. Then if it's, that one is six thousand dollars and that one is eight thousand dollars, you, you've addressed the arbitrary factor, because it's specific to the impacts that we've identified for that specific development.
Jeff has to identify that when he is giving it.
Jeff has to identify that. Here is a development that's being proposed on this specific road, and I expect this road will be impacted in this way, and I don't, who knows what it is? Bridge replacement, culvert repair, road grade, you know, additional road grading.
Oiling, paving, something.
Right, exactly. So, so now we're getting into very specific impacts that that, we expect that development to have, and, and this is what the proposed cost is going to be.
The other thing that that's doing is it's setting an expectation for an improvement to the road from the person that's paying that. We best make sure that that work is getting done, and, but I think that that takes some of the heat away from the conversation, too. Okay, I'm going to be paying for this, but I'm going to have an improved situation because of this, this, and this being done to my road.
Well, that's, that's fair, you know, it's, it's fair when you're doing like that.
I'm, I'm talking a lot, maybe I should talk less, but can I kind of propose what I see, and I'd like to just articulate what I see as a process that makes, that makes sense? And, and the first thing, I think the first thing that needs to be addressed is when a developer comes in to planning and zoning, and this condition of approval is placed on their CUP, that first meeting, we need to set expectations with that developer, that this isn't going to happen next Monday. Th- th- this is a process. This is a, and it might be a lengthy process, depending on the circumstances, but, but Jeff probably needs to check in with Sinda. I think Sinda needs to be more involved in the process than she has been up until now. She brings in a whole bunch of experience and a whole bunch of knowledge about this, but there also might need to be a non-action item discussion with this board, too, before we even get started down the road. Say, hey, we've got this proposal, and here are the issues, you know, give you an opportunity to provide some, some input. I need to be more involved from the takings analysis perspective, and just making sure that we're, we're following the law. We're identifying in, in the ordinance and in the statutes where we have the authority to act, and how we're going to construct this agreement in a way that is legally defensible. And then, so it might take several meetings, and it's going to take, it's going to take a fair amount of labor to get us from concept to completion, that may take, you know, a lot more time than I think we've invested up until now.
I would agree with that. I will, will agree with you on the bigger projects. I think where it comes into it is like the lady that just got here last week, that said, I can't pay eighty-six hundred, it'll break me. Those are one-offs, but Sinda, tell me your verbiage again, when you, because you are telling these people you are going to have to do a development agreement with the commissioners before, and you give them a timeframe.
No, I, you know, they apply. I, I want to, I want to put together a, a document, a notice of development agreement requirement, that's going to go out with each CUP application. That's what I wanted this discussion to be.
Okay.
Is who's going to have to play and who's not going to. And so they'll be put on notice. If they need to speed up and they want to do things, you know, like ten days after, you know, they get their CUP, you know, is the end of their appeal deadline, and then they want their building permit the next day, then they need to start their discussions earlier. I mean, a lot of this will depend upon who wants to move fast and who doesn't.
And do we need to meet with the planning and zoning commissioners, so we're all on the same page?
No, that would bias us.
Oh, no, because we're going to, we're going to, I, I look, look at it like, we're going to give them notice that this is what's going to be required. And then in this development agreement, you know, we're going to do it, it's going to look totally different. We're going to have, you know, the location, the use, road conditions in the general area, cost estimates for improvements to the road, and then maintenance of the road, because some people will say, well, I'm on a paved road, you don't need to pave it. No, but there's patchwork that's going to be, need to be done in the future, and then probably the next part would be in-kind. I'm hearing today that the attorney would like to get involved with that, with the takings analysis. Are you going to do that for a two-lot subdivision? Or, I mean, for each one? So I think they need to meet with the attorney first, so that he can start these analyses, because that's going to take a lot longer than anything P and Z or the road department's going to be doing. If you're going to do a takings analysis on each application.
Once I have gotten a few of them done.
It'll be, that'll be a faster.
Analysis won't be that different for.
It's really the big developments, the big multi-lots, is where we're going to.
Right, but that, that, that will take time, and they would expect that it would take time.
Here's a checkoff list of everything you got to do for this permit.
And, and we have our checkoff list, you know, submittals and all that stuff, but I want to make them aware, and this stuff is. Did that answer your, your question? I mean, we start these discussions initially, and it's really hard when, I mean, it's gotten harder since, I hate to say it, since COVID, because a lot of people you don't even meet, because they just email you their application, you don't even get to have a discussion with them.
Well, and I think the big ones are easy-peasy. There's an expectation set. If you're a developer and you're doing big developments, there's an expectation you're going to go through this.
It's the small four, five, six lot, little family deals that get us in trouble.
So let's go down Sinda's list then.
The smaller, the smaller ones are legally more risky.
Yeah.
You are, you are, you are probably going to strain to find how this fits within one of these eight criterias on your two-lot subdivisions, and how you're going to avoid a takings claim on a right-of-way dedication, if they're not developing.
We're, we're going to justify it with, you know, analysis of trips per day based upon ASH those standards and costs prepared by the Valley County engineer, that type of thing.
And that's, and that's where I think we, you know, I, that's why I'm sitting here saying, yes, let's move forward, this is something that we can do, but we have to dot the i's and cross the t's.
So how do you deal with that accessory dwelling unit that that lady was doing?
Well, hers was multiple residences. Hers was multiple residences on one parcel. That's why I wanted to kind of go through this list to get your initial thoughts.
Just a subdivision's over two lots.
So subdivisions, so does that include a one-lot subdivision?
Yeah, a paper.
So any subdivision should be required.
So if you, a one-lot subdivision is splitting something in two?
Yes.
Okay.
It's, but there could be like, let's take the Jug Mountain, John, David Carey's. He had a hundred acres, he split off two acres. So that should.
It's just like a two-lot subdivision. I mean, and still, what is the impact of that road?
Let's think about this a minute, because I'm not, not saying because of me, but like, when I had, when my sisters and brothers all got a one-acre parcel on the ranch as part of the settlement, it was a one-acre subdivision, a one-lot subdivision.
Yes, and they should have to pay just like everybody else.
And the big field that that came out of, nothing happened to that, they just took one acre out.
But the impact still is there out for everybody else that would ever.
I'm not saying that, yeah.
Live on that. I mean, you still have cars that's going back and forth on it. So I mean, those fees, I would assume, would be fairly low if, for that kind of use.
So what about just one single house? A ten-acre lot, that's going to be the same impact as a one house on one acre.
Yes.
Yeah, it will be, because you're, the same cement trucks, the same lumber trucks.
That's what I mean.
All that's coming up that road.
Subdivision, that's a brand-new house on a ten-acre chunk of property that doesn't have to do anything for a development agreement.
Yep, that's correct, because they've already been subdivided. I mean, it's an existing.
What if it's a ten-acre chunk that Joe Blow buys out here and builds one house on it, he doesn't have to do a development agreement?
No, because we're.
The presumption is that when that ten acre. The presumption is that when that ten acre lot was created.
You got it then.
That was when you got it.
Oh.
So it's any splits from this day forward or whatever we actually put this.
Oh, any subdivision, yeah.
Any subdivision, any subdivision, including an administrative plat. Or something that didn't preexist when we adopt our policy, when we have that put together.
Is that what you call an administrative subdivision?
No, I'm just talking, admin, we have administrative plats, so any plat that creates additional building site will require this.
Yes.
What about, I'm going to throw you one, a split of land by deed only. So original parcels that predate April twenty-ninth of nineteen seventy can be split one time?
They still should pay it because you still have the use of the vehicle traffic.
Right, but how are we, we don't, it's not a permitting process. All you have to do is record a deed.
You just, you just.
So that's, that's the free split. So I think that they'd get away with that.
I would assume they would, but eventually that split, somebody's going to subdivide. Then we'll get it then.
Yes. If they, if they take it past their free split, then they, they will.
Because they may not sell anything. They may not sell one lot of it. They're just, just like the Shaws. They're just splitting it up for some family members. On their own. They didn't say they were going to build anything or do anything. They just wanted to split.
Get it a bit, the building permit though. If somebody comes in for a building permit.
That would be an impact fee.
That's when you, that's when it comes to.
It's not a development agreement. That's an impact fee.
True. Yeah, I don't see a way around that one.
That's kind of a, that's kind of a great one too, isn't it?
So the next one, and I'm just getting your thoughts here.
No, no, no.
Multiple residences on one parcel. That's an addition of a house, um, typically for a long-term rental type thing. Do you want a development agreement on that? That does require a conditional use permit.
The only way I would is if they were going to convert one of the houses into a short-term rental. Because that's going to create a lot more traffic than if it was a long-term rental.
We just did this.
Well, if you're doing multiple residences though, that's, that's two different families.
It's still the use.
So it's, it's an actual use.
I mean, we could use it as a carrot to say, if you convert it, if you will make it long-term rental with a deed restriction, then you don't have to pay it. So.
But I would rather do that than to have somebody that builds a five-bedroom, two-bath house and has twenty-four people there every weekend.
Okay, so we're agreeing. So long-term rental with deed restriction versus a short-term rental or someone that is just building extra houses for their kids. That's, they're not going to be.
That's right, the kids are already impacting the road, yeah.
So, okay, that's the way to get long-term rentals. That is.
I think that would be the only option out.
That makes sense.
Because that's, and again, it goes to use. If you're, if you're a parent and you're putting your five kids on there, you're going to have that many more vehicles making a trip.
But we want to promote long-term rentals.
Long-term rentals. That would be the only opt-out.
When, when we get to the point where you have a situation like this where it's, do we grant or deny a waiver? Ultimately, that's the board's decision, right? That's something you want to be brought to you for consideration. And then you deliberate and decide, yeah, under these circumstances, we're going to waive it. Long-term rental situation, employee housing, deed restriction, you know, that kind of thing.
Yeah, there's a waiver. It should come in front of us. Right, so you'll still get a development agreement.
As legally we can.
But it will be waived, right.
Long-term rental.
But I want to be able to write out the policy. I'm writing up policy now. Okay. Accessory dwelling units. We do admin, we do administrative permits for accessory dwelling units. You know, to promote those long-term rentals or mother-in-law apartments and.
Is there like a lot restriction? You have to have a certain size lot before you can do it?
No, you, you can't go over a thousand square feet or fifty percent of the floor area of the primary, and they cannot be a short-term rental.
Fifty percent of the primary?
One of them has to be occupied by you.
What's the difference in use?
Am I like a, a unit over your garage or something like that?
What's the difference in use? How do, how do you tell somebody that, the young lady that came in the other day was splitting it, building another unit? We charged her, waved off half of it. How do you tell her we're going to charge you but not charge the person over here?
We shouldn't have charged her.
You should have or should not have.
If she would have kept the old house as a long-term rental, she, it would have been a wave.
That's what she's going to do.
Well, we didn't ask her to de-restrict it.
Waved half of it.
And we didn't restrict it with a deed.
So in this new policy, what we're doing in the future, that would have been a consideration. Is if you do a deed restricted long-term rental on that, then you can waive that.
In my opinion, I think we charge it, and if they want a waiver, they apply for it in.
For an accessory dwelling unit?
Yes. The BLCC can then.
Yeah, it was so covered. Yeah, that's a great idea. Yep.
Charge it, they want a waiver, they have to apply for it.
Part, part of this policy will have a waiver criteria and a form that they can fill out. And then they can come and present it to you and, and they can tell you why they feel like they qualify.
I think we charge it unless there's a waiver applied. Okay, so commercial uses, um, all that's going to be based, or industrial uses all based on trips per day. There's ASHTO standards.
How is that going to work? I'm going to use the Caterpillar place for an example. Do you count how many employees are working there?
No, ASHTO standards would have, um, certain trips per day based upon the type of use in the, this work.
You already have that data.
I don't, but we're going to, our engineer can provide that to us.
Is that like, like here's a storage unit, here's a cat dealership, here's whatever, grocery store, blah, blah, blah.
Yeah, they, they have those standards. They exist. And then the, the cost of each one of those trips has already been analyzed in these cost estimates.
These don't trip per day.
Yes. But you want to do that, we've always said, you know, home-based businesses where they're just starting, they don't need a conditional use permit.
I think it depends on the use. And if I'm a CPA and I don't have any clients coming to my front door, that's different. Than if I'm going to run a garage, you know, or some kind of an auto mechanic out of my garage.
That, we would typically require a conditional use permit for that.
So what are the kinds of home-based businesses? Are you not requiring a CP? Hairdresser's going to have people coming and going all day long?
An envelope stuffer.
Well, then there's the UPS truck.
Computer people.
So if they're not making trips to and from, that's different than somebody that actually.
Just a few. I mean, you can only cut so many people's hair. If you're the only one cutting hair, you're only going to get four or five people there a day.
What's difference of that than me and my spouse coming and going twice a day?
Well, it's seven times is the.
You know what I'm saying.
I, I do.
I know you love some, and, and I support home-based businesses too, but that doesn't mean that if you're applying for a CUP or.
Well, you don't get, have a CUP for a home-based business. That's the point.
Then it's not going to come in front of us anyway.
Right.
Me, there's, that's one of those, we won't get it until they expand the business.
Until there's a conditional use permit, we will not require a development agreement. But once they have to move in, the impacts are great enough that, um, they have to get the conditional use permit, then they have to get the development agreement.
Right.
Okay.
Not going to hear from them before then anyway, so.
Huh? We allow them to put up a sign. Our recreation business is industrially, industrially.
Um, let's talk a little bit about the recreational business. If I want to build a zip line at the end of a road somewhere. Is that, and it's going to create a lot of trips. To me, that would qualify for a development agreement.
It's on private land, because they're going to have to get a conditional use permit. The CUP, the ADU, the permit being issued is, is what will give us the leverage to require these agreements. And they're not voluntary. We're going to quit using voluntary, because we're going to require them.
What was in your thought process when you listed area business and recreation business?
Oh, I was just going through our nine dash three dash one table. I was just kind of going brainstorming, nothing in my mind.
Recreation business would still give you the leeway to charge what, whatever is needed.
And with a CUP. Fire stations.
Well, let's go back. You, you skipped over industrial.
That, we're just going to do trips per day.
Okay.
Is my thought there. I was just listing different types of uses.
Um, I think any public entity like that shouldn't have to pay these, a fire station, these stations, school.
I agree with that.
That you're just double taxing your taxpayers.
Reallocating, yes.
And currently, we're only including roads in these development agreements. I guess when we come through for the discussion, you will, and you know the area, then you can determine if there's something else that they should be participating with.
Well, and I guess it comes down to who's responding to the request for information. I mean, if you're looking at a CUP, schools should be responding.
They don't respond, but we, we notice them.
I understand that. But if we actually communicate with them, hey, we are going to be requiring specific things, you know, on some of these applications. We need your input. Maybe that would help them to understand the necessity of doing it.
Well, at school, they responded to the West Rock because of the concern about bilingual, uh, teachers. Jug Mountain and some of the other larger ones, they weren't concerned with because they want those kids because that's how they get their money. And so concerned with increased number of students, it was the extra services they were going to have to provide based upon the specific use.
Those are already full and need new schools.
So, okay, I think most of those were answered.
Are they going to be enough?
Yeah, the, the whole point is to now write a, a policy to describe what we've done here and lay out a process.
Okay, I think we got a good start. I think we should do this again as soon as you get it written.
Right, oh, yeah.
Yeah, get it to us. I'm going to sit down. Do you want a little bit more?
Yeah, definitely.
And I just, you know, I just think it's a concern that they need some idea that they're going to be facing something before they go get a CUP. And we put approvals on something that all of a sudden they go, eh, doesn't pencil anymore, I'm not going to do this. Because then they've just, we've wasted everybody's time at that moment.
I'll have to look at, um, it might already be on our list.
As this board, we have to be able to say, you know what, I understand you need a building permit, but you're going to have to wait. We're not going to rush this decision because you've got a deadline. And we haven't done very well at that. We're trying to do better at that.
Wait a minute, I'm a home builder. This is rush season.
City of McCall, everybody hates their process because it takes so long. That's why it takes so long. They're making sure their i's are dotted and their t's are crossed and it takes a while.
Well, good work on this undone, Jeff. I think, and Brian, I think we're getting there slowly. So we need a real quick break and then.
Do you want the same thing, Jeff, to work with the City of McCall on the same type of thing for the impact area?
The impact area is pretty goofy, but I think I'm starting to figure it out. I talk to Brian quite a bit when I have questions and.
I'm talking, yeah.
I, I ask him one-sentence questions and he writes me an email about that long.
That's better than that long.
About the Brian in McCall?
Yeah.
I'll get it.
Thank you.
Bill, the commissioners are a little bit behind.
Okay.
Will you see if Annette's over there and ask her to come over?
Okay.
Okay. Thanks for the break, everyone. We're gonna go right on down today. Our next agenda item is a...
May. Subrecipient grants.
Grants?
Yep.
This is an action item. Subrecipient agreement for the state homeland security grant program.
Okay, so there's two grants. As of date, I've done 14 of these grants. And then I've done two supplementals and three incidental ones. One of them, the last one being through the Homeland Security Grant was the intercom upgrade of 56,000. Then one on the SHP grant of 2020. So there's generally about two grants that we have funding for in the account through Idaho GMS, the Grant Management System. So right now, we just finished up 21, we're on 22, using 22, and then we have 23. And 23 for the state homeland security grant program, the SHSP. This year is $31,744.60. And the milestones for that is specific to interoperable communications. So the entire grants for that, that's what we've been doing over the last seven years, is specific to that. So we've been doing mountaintop repeaters, but we think we're caught up with the mountaintop repeater, so we're utilizing interoperable communications for equipment and/or studies to create a plan of attack for upgrading the entire system as a whole. So that's how we have the money earmarked for this particular year. I can always go back to 22 and change that as well if we need money out of that one. That one's about $30,528 that we still have in that account, so there's roughly $60,000 in the SHSP. One thing that's nice about the SHSP is there's no, it's 100% awarded, so there's no cost share at all. So whatever they, we spend, they're going to pay, that's what, they're going to use it till it's fulfilled, and if we pay over, then we just have to use over. There's been a couple of times where we've gone over a couple of times by a few hundred dollars that the Sheriff's Department has had to pay a little bit out of their contingency fund for some mountaintop repeater replacement. That's the homeland security grant program.
And I totally get all that. I question whether this needed to go through the prosecuting attorney's office with our change in policy. That's, I totally, yeah, this is something in the past, you know. We changed the policy about a year ago, and anything we signed goes through the PA just to make sure that it meets county policy. And we have found on almost every single one of the Forest Service that we had to change a bunch of stuff. We changed so many contracts, it's not even funny.
How's this due, one?
It's due in a couple of weeks. So here's the thing with this, is this comes straight out of the FEMA office? And I don't know what your policy is, so, but the thing is, is every county goes through these if you want the money, so I don't, I just have to have it in by the 7th. I try to get it in before because I like to see before the 7th that we have a green marker, so that if I need to use any funding, it's available by the 7th.
I think in this case, this is kind of just a roll-over grant. I'm not sure that...
And we've been already awarded the grant. So the states, the feds already awarded the states, the state has already awarded us. It's all based on population. Now, there is some counties that don't take the grant. Then all that money goes back into a pool, and then we get to ask for, we, anybody can ask for it after that, so.
And maybe we could have, you know, Brian's office review it for next year, but at some moment in time, we just have to follow our own policy. And he looks at everything, including...
Yeah, I think that's a great idea. Next year, if we can get it done a little quicker, we'll run it through him just...
Again, too, I'm, I'm subject to FEMA and the state. This actually should have been done September 30th, but because of the issues with the new LUMA program, they weren't able to allocate fundings and they weren't able to come up with the rules of the SHSP by federal statute, so that's why it's, that's why we're doing this in November.
But this is the same, there's nothing really changed here other than the dates.
Other than the dates.
So if we approve this today, we can at least have him look at it, so we have review before next year. And I doubt it would change much before then, so.
This just came out like last Thursday because they're so far behind at the federal level.
And they sneak in things that we have been amazed to find in their contracts, so.
I didn't see much difference between this one and that except for a few thes and ands.
Yeah, I think, I think we're okay. We can, we'll get it to Brian, he can look at it, but I want to go back and I lost something. You said there's about 60,000 in this account now?
Uh, yeah, this grant, once you get this signed, I'll have 60,000 in that account. And that is specific to interoperable communications.
And that's the money we're going to use to hire somebody, I can't remember the name of the company that we talked to.
We're going to try to change the grant narrative in the last one and utilize this one to do that, so we can pay for that study.
And how much was that study?
We don't know yet.
We don't know yet, okay. That's where I'm at.
We just approved one for the sheriff. For 40,000.
Right.
And that's different than this...
We're hoping to get reimbursed with that from last year's and a portion of this year's, is what I'm trying to work out with the state right now. With this grant and the last grant.
Okay, so I'm going to go ahead and make the motion that we approve the state homeland security program grant of $31,744.60. Second, moved in second, any more discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
And then the next one is the 2023 EMPG grant, that's specific to the Emergency Management Office. That's the portion that is $28,128.26. So this one is a 50-50 grant, so the feds will pay 50% of that and the county covers the rest. And that's for the EM, Emergency Management Office, which is me. And that's for this fiscal year. And again, there was no changes in the requirements. And one thing I do would like to say is, is none of this goes through the clerk. I do all the reimbursements and the paperwork and all the updates through Idaho GMS. So I do all that, it gets double-checked by the state, sent to the feds, and they release the funding for reimbursements. And then like the SHSP goes directly to the vendor, so there's no use of the...
Are you at risk and are you the one that receives the money?
That's why I have to have the million-dollar liability bond.
How much is this, this one?
This one is $28,182.26.
And we pay half that, that's what this is for.
Pay half of it, correct.
Everybody understand this? So I'd entertain a motion to approve.
I don't approve the EMPG 2023 for a total award of $28,182.26 with 50% of that reimbursed.
You're gonna have to go down to the office and get the, oh, you have a second. Okay, we had a motion second, any more discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. You need to short or need one?
And that was one of the things we added on the contract to make sure that whoever's EM has that liability insured.
Okay.
That cover is specific to the subcontractor of dealing with grants.
I would be a little more worried about you signing it and receiving the funds.
Oh, I can't do that because no, no money goes to me. It goes straight from the state to either you guys or to the vendors. I don't see any cash. That's there.
Doug's that come to us?
The EMPG comes directly to us.
EMPG goes straight to you guys. I don't, I only get, I don't get, I don't see any cash at all. I just, my paper says who goes here and who goes there. And then everything else goes.
Right.
That's all I had.
Okay, thank you very much. We're gonna move on down. But this time, I, please invite all the chiefs up to the front. Anybody else that wants to come, we could have a little party. And Bill is on the line. Hello, Bill, good to see you, sir.
Thank you.
This is a workshop, this is not an action item. This is a workshop to discuss dissolution of the Valley County EMS district and creation of Valley County-wide EMS district after the general election results on November 7th. And I'm not sure who's leading this discussion, so whoever is, go first.
I can do a staff report, and maybe Douglas Miller could follow with that. Following the, and I want to thank Douglas for sending me legal descriptions for the sub-districts of this new district, as well as the canvas of the election and the certification of the election on the vote of creating a new ambulance district. So knowing that we're in a situation where in order for this new district to be able to make a... Am I off?
Nope, now you're good.
Oh, thank you. So for, in order for the district to be able to do and function, to get a levy for 2425, it's going to have to be, it's going to have to be formed and organized, and that, of course, certified copy of that order is going to have to be to the State Tax Commission before the end of the year. And of course, as you recall, as we were staffing this before, we would be, if we get a successful vote, we would be trying to move forward as quickly as possible in order to meet that timetable. The other piece of this would be forming the new district and then getting the existing district in a situation so that it is, can proceed with the dissolution of this district, complete the operations that it needs to do and process for dissolution and so on. And so in that regard, I have prepared and forwarded to Douglas a draft of the order, which would be proposed to organize the new district. And the word "organized" really comes in, is in the statute, so that's why we're using that word. But the draft, I'm, I think Doug, Douglas has probably provided you with a copy of that draft. I'm not sure if he's had time to do that. I sent it.
I'm just saying right now, Bill, I haven't had time.
Yeah, okay. Basically, what, what that order form does is it has, starts out with findings, and it really is a complete litany of the findings, starting when the petitions were filed and the process that was followed. And the idea would be, and I have, over the years, I've acquired formation documents for most all of the districts that I represent, and then some of them, it's easier to figure out all the process went through, and some of them just have an order that says something, but then you have to get other documents to see, well, did this process or wasn't followed? So that's why there are findings in this that show chronologically what all went on, including your entering and granting the order, granting the petition to form the new district, as well as your intention to dissolve the existing district, subject to the condition of the election. And, and then, this is then followed by an order which would establish the district's and its name, which is the Valley County-wide EMS district, which was on the ballot and which was in the petition which you granted, including the legal description of the entire county, which are the boundaries of the new district. And then we have in order number two, the formation or the establishment of the sub-districts, of which there will be three, and those are going to be exactly the same as your sub-districts. And Douglas has provided me with the updated, I think, GIS legal descriptions for those which are contained in this order. And then this order includes a proposal that would appoint the duly-qualified persons to hold the offices for the three sub-districts. And I can have the chiefs talk about the names. There's a Ron Julian would be Sub District 1, which is the Cascade area. Sub District 2 would be Travis Smith, which is the McCall area. And, and Sub District 3 would be Gregory Irvine, which is the Donley area. And, and the order includes not only their name, but their addresses, so that, and that these are, as I understand it, qualified electors who reside within the boundaries of these proposed sub-districts, and would be persons that would have interest in and some knowledge to be able to be commissioners of the new district. So, and then it would include direction to the county clerk about where the order was filed and so on and so forth, and where to all certified copies have to go, the assessor's office, the State Tax Commission. We have to send one to the governor's office by statute, the county recorder, and so on. And so that's what the, what the order contains. And I'm thinking at this point, just might have some information from the chiefs about the proposed commissioners for this new district and a little about their background.
Bill, can I ask a question?
Sure.
We've received another name for the Donley district. Did you guys receive multiple names? So I don't know exactly what the process is.
So that was Cascade District.
John Summerwick is Donley.
Um, I'm gonna have to find it.
It's John Summerwick.
I don't remember which district, but it was John Summerwick.
He lives in Donley. He's out on Don Drive.
That's not Donley District, though. According to the county district lines, that's Cascade District.
Um, he sent a resume and all kinds of stuff.
I guess it's, greater question is, if you have multiple people, how are you guys making a decision on who to put forth for the individual? Did you guys just have one step up?
And in the Cascade area, we had three people that I was aware of that was interested in the position. So we had them fill out kind of a hundred and tent and a short resume, and we went through those and made a decision who would best serve the Cascade area. And that name was not within...
So can you tell us the other two names?
Yes, it was Ben Ozuri and Jordan Acunzi. Acunzi.
Joel.
Jordan.
Oh, Jordan, oh, okay.
It's his brother, it's Cross Street.
Yeah, Mr. Mopkin, we talked about this. We were trying to get just people in those zones that had a background in the issue that were agreeable to serving. I think we talked about if, if this is the county commissioner's appointment, but to like advertise for people, because I know there's more people interested in serving, and go through that process, or just push and decision-making down the road. Like to get, if the EMS district was to try to get this issue on the May ballot, they have to have a resolution to the county by March. It gives us like two or three months of organizing, setting up a board, and being able to make a decision to push a resolution. Like we're just everyday counts right now, in trying to get this on the May ballot. Because if we don't pass it in May, and it goes to November, it will push funding out until 26.
But I'm assuming, Garrett, that you guys interviewed all these clients or these folks that were interested? You just, you just picked somebody that you liked?
We picked people that showed interest, that were agreeable to serving. I did, we did not solicit.
And I understand your rush, I get that, but...
And that's your guys' decision.
Right.
I think a couple of months ago when we talked about this, you guys just said, give us three names of people that want to serve, and we'll get it set up.
Is that the same in Donley? Did you have more than one?
Got one.
That's it.
McCall only had one, correct?
We had two people show interest in it.
I just want to make sure we're following proper process. I mean, I know what it is when we have to appoint another elected official, and it, it's a political deal at our level, but we have to have three, and then you get one from those three. So it's not just looking at an individual that you guys think is best. So that's, I just want to make sure we're following proper process, so once they're seated, there is no question.
Yeah, and we talked to Mr. Giggory about that, and he seemed to think there wasn't a process other than...
He's not the one that has to listen to them. People complain at the end of the day. So let's make sure...
We talked about it, if we put in the paper, solicit interest, run it a week, people have two weeks to put it in, then we vet it, like we could be easily into January before they get appointed, and then they have to set up a district, and then try to make a decision and educate voters by, have a resolution to the county by March, seems unrealistic.
So if you guys interviewed and vetted your own people, or the people that came to you, so you each have one person now for each district? I don't think there's a problem.
What you could do, commissioners? If I might?
Yeah, go ahead.
I mean, it's a matter of discretion. The statute does not, it says you appoint the new commissioners, and that's about it. It doesn't specify any specific process that you need to follow, obviously. It's a matter of your discretion. I mean, what you could do is, we can, we could, what, what meeting you would decide you're going to schedule putting this order, you could provide any, the resume that you've received or whatever to the fire district chief to be able to review if he hasn't received it, and you can decide on who you would appoint at that subsequent meeting. And then it's just a matter of typing in a different name, if it is somebody other than what is proposed in the draft order that I've prepared. It's, but I, the chiefs are correct. I think that to follow a process where you would advertise in the paper and then you would have, and what we do in the fire district, and the fire district law requires this, is when we have a vacancy, then we have to post notice that there is a vacancy, and we have to provide what the meeting that they're going to consider appointment, and then persons have the opportunity to, to submit. And then I have a form I use, which I provided to the fire districts, which is a notice from the individual of their wanting to be appointed to the position, and then I have a form that they fill out to provide the, the fire district boards with information about that person's qualifications to serve as a commissioner of the fire district. In this instance, I modified it for the ambulance district.
Well, and I think Garrett's absolutely right, too, in the fact that it was a month or two back that I probably made the statement that you guys bring us who you wanted on the board. So I think you're the ones that are going to have to work with them. To me, I'm satisfied with the names you presented. There's always going to be kickback from people that you don't appoint, and we deal with that, you know, through our own issues with B and Z and all the different commissions that we have. Sometimes people were offended that you didn't appoint them, but that's just life, you know?
They can run, but then they still have to run.
And they have to run.
So one, two, and three years.
Sub District 1 will stand for election in two years. I mean, they all do. They all stand for election in 25. So then the person that runs for Sub District 1 then would be in a term of two years, and the other two would be in a term for four years, but they all stand for election in November 25.
Hey.
Hopefully then I'll all get booted off, you guys will be training all over again.
Start all over again?
Okay, I just wanted to ask the question.
You had a question, you had another question before, Mr. Giggory. You wanted to know who the other names were?
I think Eld asked that, to me it isn't.
Yeah, that was just from Cascade.
I just, somebody needs to get back to Mr. Summerwick and tell him what the process is and when he can run again, so. He sent that to you, do you want to send that back?
I can, yeah.
Respond to him?
Our decision had already been made at our meeting, so that's why I didn't...
So maybe just respond what his options will be going forward?
Actually, you might provide a copy of that to the fire district chief, so that at least they can say they reviewed it, if they didn't receive it.
I'll send it to everyone.
Well, maybe he would like to volunteer and get his name in, you know, now for the future, so probably not volunteering there. So the other question I have, and I, we just got all this stuff, we haven't had a chance to review it. So we're dissolving the old district who actually has the... district who actually has the authority to levy. So with the creation of the new district, that gives them the authority to level just at our current level, correct? Or does it go up to the 2%?
It depends on, excuse me, it depends on if they have a special election in May, you call a special election in May that they request by resolution. Then if that passed, they would have the authority of the override election. If it doesn't pass, yes, they're at your current level. That's correct.
So they're at our current level, but we've dissolved the old district which actually had levying authority. So does the new district have levying authority?
Yes. Once it's created, it will. And you'll see in the plan of dissolution, which I can talk about, that you're, you're going to agree in the plan of dissolution that you will not levy for fiscal year 24, 25, or any subsequent, because you'll be dissolving the existing district.
Bill, a couple of questions. First of all, I think there's a little bit of slush fund left in EMS?
There's 138,000.
Do we transfer that over as soon as we see a bank account? Or how does that process work?
Well, this is, when I go over the plan of dissolution, I can tell you what some of the provisions are in it. In regards to that, it's a very good question. If you want me to go into that, I'll do it.
Nope. Yeah, go ahead. Because I, that's the only thing that's slowing me up.
Excuse me. I have a cold or a flu that I've been getting over and it, I get a cough and then sometimes when I talk and then it starts and it's like uncontrollable. And if I, I'm going to mute myself if that happens, but hopefully we'll make it through.
Thank you for not sharing.
Yeah, too much information. But I, there would be, I prepared a resolution and it also has a number of findings about what's going on here. And that resolution would be the approval by your board of the, of the service district. Am I still on?
Yeah, you're still here.
Okay. Of the, would be the dissolution of a plan, plan of dissolution of the Valley County Emergency Service District. And that plan, I've, I've supplied a copy of that resolution to Douglas. And then also I've supplied him with a copy of the plan of dissolution and transfer of assets. That is an agreement. And the reason is part of it would involve the transfer of the ass, some of the assets of the, of the existing district to the new district. And in the end, it would. But basically what this does is it says that you will, the governing body of the dissolving district, which is the current one, shall not unless otherwise provided in, and I have a whole section three that has the things that you're going to do, will not engage in any business activities except for the purpose of preserving the assets, winding up and liquidating its business and affairs, including but not limited to prosecuting and defending suits, whether civil, criminal, or administrative, and so on and so forth. So that's, we start out. Then it also includes a section that you will conduct a full and complete audit, which will be timely conducted through the dissolving district's 2023-24 fiscal year, which you'll need to do. And so you will follow the provisions of 67405B for that audit. And that you would complete that audit hopefully within the nine months after the ending of that fiscal year, which you're allowed to do by statute. Because you'll finish, as you well know, a fiscal year and the auditor automatically rolls in and says, here's your audit.
And Bill, our.
I'd love to see that happen.
Bill, our audit is scheduled for February 6th through the 8th. When they do the county one, they'll also do the EMS. February 6th through the 8th is when they'll be here.
Okay, so that'll happen in, that'll happen in 25.
In 2024.
Yeah, but for fiscal year 23, 24, which you've levied for, you're still going to have expenditures in that fiscal year. So you'll have an audit for that fiscal year. See what I'm getting at?
I'm not, because I thought this was transferring during this fiscal year. Is that not the case?
Well, I don't know what you've expended thus far. Because it has to do with how much you've expended.
I got you. We've expended 3,900, oh, excuse me. Approximately, yeah, $3,900 for this fiscal year. We have not made the payments to the, to the fire departments for their contract. What has been expended was the public relations expense.
Then my recommendation would be that we talk to your auditor about what they recommend. If you automatically, if you transfer those funds and you don't make any more expenditures out of there, then you're going to be under the amount required for audits and even an annual financial statement. You just want to make sure, I, if I'm in your shoes, I want to make sure I've complied with audit requirements of the state law. And obviously, being on the other side of this, the receiving side, we would want to make sure that you've done everything so that that's all complete because if there are expenses incurred and so on and so forth, saying, well, no, this needs to be done and that, then we get into issues afterwards. And so I would clear that with the auditor about what their recommendation is. So documents and records, those should be kept, in my opinion, by the county. I've got the Valley County clerk as for safekeeping of the documents because obviously your records and all of the operation of the existing district are going to stay with you folks. They're not going to be transferred because we're moving from one entity to another. And so those records remain, the, the records of the existing district and the county, I, I would say would be the appropriate place. That the governing body, and this is where we may have to change this depending on what you, what you want to do. But if I've got in here that the dissolving district will continue to perform the terms and conditions of the service contract that is required to perform for the remainder of the service contract year, which would of course end September 30, 2024. But if we're looking at some kind of amendment and transfer of assets, then we'll have to look at some change of wording there. Also, the next one is that you would be the governing body, the dissolving district will continue to receive property tax payments collected by the county treasurer pursuant to your current levy for untamed, and then that could be unpaid tax payments as well from prior fiscal years. Property tax receipts will be applied to timely payment of dissolving district's liabilities. And I would, I would expect that would be, that's going to be ongoing. Property tax levy, it says that the district will not levy a property tax for any fiscal year subsequent to fiscal year 23, 24. Non-property tax receipts, whatever those are, it's my understanding that there are vehicle registration payments that you receive. There may be some other forms. And then there's a provision about you would continue to receive those and apply those for timely payment of the dissolving district's liabilities. It's my understanding the dissolving district has no interest in any real property. I've asked, and Douglas, to see what personal property, except for the records of the district is, if there is any, and there should be an exhibit listing what those are, insurance coverage. There would be a provision where the governing body of the, of the dissolving district will maintain all dissolving district insurance coverages until September of 2024 and will purchase liability claims made tail insurance coverage for a period. And then I think we have to rely upon the insurance agent as to how many years that should be carried so that in the event you get a claim, if you've got a claim made and you end your insurance, then you've got no insurance coverage. If you've got a claim that comes from activity that happened a few years ago. So you want to deal with, I think, some tail coverage in case a claim is made. And then we'd have to transfer the assets, excuse me, to the new district. I had talked to the, the chiefs about that. And of course, what's going to have to happen during the next calendar year till, at least you get to the new levy, is they're going to have to organize, they're going to have to, we're going to have to have this override election. They're going to have to have minutes and they're going to have to have meetings and they're going to have to get organized. And then of course, they're not going to get a lot of tax receipts until January of 25. And so the estimate I received from the chiefs was $60,000. That would be a sum that would be, could be transferred maybe in January of 2024 to the new district to give them operating capital to get started. They'll need to have a secretary and so on and so forth. And then on the completion and acceptance of the district of, of any audit, a determination of the amount of liquid assets needed to pay reasonably foreseeable costs and liabilities of the dissolving district, the transfer of the remaining liquid assets of the new district to the new district, which of course it would be used exclusively for its operational and capital expenses as authorized by law. And so that was kind of the outline of the activity that I felt would be relevant to a dissolving ambulance district. There are provisions in this for, in the case there's a claim of default by either party and the idea of default resolution process and mediation if it was needed. I don't think it will be, but the parties will cooperate, amendment provisions, effective date, and gen, general provisions related to, you know, which are you see on the end of most contracts with some modification. And so that's kind of what I have prepared. I've shared it with the fire chiefs. And of course, Douglas just received it last Friday and then he hasn't had an opportunity to get it to you. But that would be kind of kicking the ball off for you to review and see what modifications of that need to be made.
Bill, this is El. $60,000, that can be more, can it, if we want?
I'm sure it can be.
Yeah. Because I think Doug just said we had around 120 in there. And then we're going to get a bunch more collection here after the December taxes, correct?
Correct.
And that's going to be a pretty good size of chunk of money.
But I guess, Bill, I'm, I'm confused. So we're still, the dissolving district will still be making the payments to the fire district to uphold the existing contracts until September of 2024?
Well, that's kind of how, that's how I saw it. Because you're going to receive, you're going to keep receiving tax money all the way through that. You're going to receive it in January and February, March, and then all the way into July, which is another big one. And so it seemed to me that that agreement, those agreements had to be followed, that you can't really terminate them. And it, it just seemed to me that this would be a logical way for the existing district to get through. And remember, the Idaho law pretty much, and you'll see it in corporate law and other entities, that when an entity dissolves, it basically, of course, is ceasing to do business. But the governing body of the entity has the authority to conduct whatever necessary business there is in order to complete the dissolution. So it's not like it just vanishes.
So the governing body would still be responsible then ultimately, the, the Valley County Board of County Commissioners would be responsible for collecting of the payments and then dispersments of those payments to the fire districts, which we have an existing contract with. But the new district, what oversight, I guess I'm confused about what oversight that they would have over the, the new district? Because they technically don't have any type of contract with the fire departments to provide that type of service.
You know, in my mind, the new district board would be basically organizing itself and getting itself prepared, probably would establish some operational policy. And, and then of course would work on some contracts and otherwise with the fire districts for fiscal year 2024, 25.
Okay, Bill, I apologize for interrupting you. I guess I'm confused of why we would be giving them any of the, the funds first then? Because those funds are going to be utilized for operating costs, right?
The, well, that's why we just proposed, I think it was 60,000 would be. And then you would play out all the rest of it. And then you wouldn't, you wouldn't transfer the rest of it until you had completed your whole process and you know how much money you got left.
And then you would, then you'd give the rest at the end of September when your fiscal year's up, then we're completely out and the rest of that money would go.
Yeah, if you're, well, then or even later, the one thing, you know, if you've got an audit expense or there's some other expenses you want to hold back.
Okay.
You want to make sure that you're covered on insurance or a few, a few logistics, but.
That's all we're going to do is the audit. The audits and the payments to the fire districts.
But that, that's, that's the contract we have with them now until September.
Do we have any insurance or anything?
You have, I'm sure you.
They're paying for it already. What's our actual hard cost for them?
Only thing would be the audits, all I can think of.
Yeah. And the, the yearly payments or the bi-yearly payments that we're making.
From tax revenue.
Correct.
So any insurance contracts are already within, what, the fire department's paying for that? We don't have insurance?
We have never paid for insurance for the vehicles.
Each individual district manages that.
But the new.
I think you probably just have general liability coverage would be my guess.
I think we could do this.
Yeah, the, the new EMS district law, insurance, legal costs.
Bill's asking is the existing EMS district. I don't know, that's a great question regarding insurance that has been provided over the years. I don't know if that's laid out in the agreement between the fire departments and the existing EMS district or not.
It's not in the agreements or nor it has been. We just always, because we're already running ambulatory, each of the districts, when we created the EMS system, we just maintained that same liability insurance for not only fire, but EMS as well, because we were already doing that.
You have collision and all that stuff on the ambulances? Everything.
The only thing is, is I don't know at that time if that commissioning board, but had the county had its own liability, had the EMS system on its own liability as well. That, I don't know. If there's a cost.
My hunch, my hunch would be since they're independent contractors, not employees of the district or otherwise, then the fire districts are responsible and are in control of their providing the service. And so they're ones that are, in my mind, liable as also and responsible for the operations of their personnel and of their vehicles and equipment. What my, what my thought was about where the commission sits of the existing district is that your commissioners, there can be claims that can be brought against commissioners for various things. And the idea is that commissions usually provide at least some general liability. And I have fire districts that do contract for all of their service, like Caldwell Rural Fire Protection District, and they carry their own insurance. And we have, as long as I've been representing them. But you could contact your agent and say, this is what's going on. And we want your advice about what coverage we should have for. And say, this is what's going on and we want your advice about what coverage we should have for this fiscal year. And then what tail coverage should we provide, should we obtain? So that if a claim were made by anyone, as you know, when it comes in, you give notice to your insurance carrier and tender the defense of the action. So you're not paying to defend the darn thing. And so that's, in this instance, it's like if I've got a client who is selling their professional business or whatever, and I've just had one. You know, we always have them buy tail insurance so that they're covered in case some claim comes in after they've transferred all of the assets. That they have in the, in the. In the business and the same thing I see is as an analogy in your situation. Now, if your insurance.
Tail insurance, that's kind of like covering your backside, is that what that references?
That's kind of it, yeah, it's kind of like cover, giving you coverage for a period of time during the term of the policy. In case any claims come in and they're responsible. For defending you as well as if it's covered, pay on the claim.
Bill, this is Elte, I, I'm up with you on it, I've been able to follow you along. We didn't do this as an action item today, so we will have to read agenda probably next week for, as an action item. Assign a resolution number and then I think we're ready to move forward.
When do we actually appoint? Are you going to bring them in and swear in commissioners, I mean? We should do an official swearing.
Chairman Commissioners, Mr. Oki's also received this email, so I don't know if you would like him.
Yeah.
To provide an opinion regarding, we do appreciate all the work that Mr. Gigrey has done. Documents have been submitted to the county, they have been submitted to your attorney. And if he can get to it by the twenty seventh, we'll definitely put, he's indicating that he can, so we will have this on the next agenda for November twenty seventh.
And then you will also swear in new commissioners then too?
I would, if that is a requirement of the clerk's office to do, yes, we would require, request and require each one of those new EMS district commissioners to come in. Provide them with the oath of office and officially swear them in, either the chairman will or the clerk can as well.
We can swear at them too. Well, let's shoot for next Monday. Can you guys line that up with your three candidates? Make sure that you get them here.
Are you guys going to do an override? Are you going to do, try and go for the?
The new board will have to have their organizational meeting. And then, once they get through that process and appoint their officers and on and on, then all they need to do, as you well know, as you did. Is approve a resolution calling for a special election in May and they have to get that to you, to the clerk. Do you remember the, the date, it's in March.
March sixteenth, isn't it?
Yeah, that sounds good to me.
That's awesome, but the issue is we'll never see you guys again. We'll see you.
That is their biggest wish.
Hopefully, hopefully you won't on any kind of a transportation run see them either.
Yeah, that's true, I didn't want to see you looking down at me in the ambulance, huh?
So is all these ambulances, all that assets, all going to be transferred to the EMS district? They own the ambulances.
The only asset, I guess, is the money that we've been collecting, the tax dollars that have been collected.
We'll let their new commissioners light that one out. They should be in the EMS.
They're their own taxing district, I didn't know if they would be owning the ambulances and, I mean, you guys all.
And I was just curious, if you just did a simple override for at least two years, you only have to have fifty percent. That would give you at least funding for the next two years versus just going for it again and then risking not having anything.
That's up to the new commission.
It is, you are correct.
I like your flag today.
Yeah, where's the flag?
Very nice.
You got it, that's it.
I like the thing is wherever you throw it, it will stand.
Yeah, actually Sicily has a similar three-legged. Flag.
But threw me with spurs.
It's armored. Legs.
That's armored, okay.
Three armored legs.
From who?
Great Britain.
That's Great Britain?
There's a great, there's a, I can't, they don't have an exact, who it was for, but it's like somebody the third.
Bill, while we still have you here. We need, we need five minutes too, guys. Annette's in the room back there, so we've had a lot of conversation around the building department and who's doing what and trying to enforce this ordinance. So we are collecting fees. What we are thinking is, is if there is a waiver of any kind to those fees, it's going to go to you guys to create and provide the waiver, come back to us. I mean, literally, the only thing we're doing is collecting the building permit. They will not get a building permit unless they have paid their fees or they have a waiver in their hands. So when it's somebody that's hot, again, we have your contact information, they're going to go and talk to you guys. Annette, I think that was, there were some questions on, the ordinance says upon a foundation, a building, you know, what about an ADU? If they are doing an ADU to an existing building, do they pay the permit? That was my feeling too.
But no garages, no commercial.
No, they do pay on commercial.
Well, they do on commercial.
Commercial pays by the square foot.
Well, that's right, that's right.
No garages, no rag.
They're doing their windows or roof, that's not.
Annette, is there anything else you want to ask?
What was that? No, attached carriages do not. That's the house in the living quarters above.
Are we good?
We're going to be communicating back and forth for some clarity on some things.
Response from Mr. Gigrey that the answer.
It did, but it kind of gave a few more questions and it gave us a few additional questions. So we just want clarity and we, we're going to have to write up a policy here. And just basically, we're going to put in it, if they come for a building permit, they either pay the fee, they have a waiver. Or they don't get their building permit and that's really what we're doing.
Well, if we ever need to set up a quick phone call with Mr. Gigrey and Annette and us, like, we're happy to do it.
The only time.
Do your policy, if there's specific questions, I'm sure we're all willing to get online and figure it out.
I think there's going to be some, you know, needed to be flexibility. Annette's concern is somebody starts a building without a building permit. Technically, they haven't paid their fee, we're going to go after them for late fees. So we're going to have to figure out how to collect late fees, any kind of penalty that would be on the district at the same time. And we don't, you know, that's, those are the kind of questions that are going to be. Probably needing clarity as we move forward, so. So now that we, we do have some questions, we'll just continue to work back and forth, trying to make it as easy as possible on both sides, but.
We're just trying to streamline this process.
And there's always going to be gray areas, you guys, no matter what you do, so. Just deal with it as it comes. We good?
Yeah, and we do, I have prepared and my clients have forms for the various kinds of applications that might be made. That would involve impact fees other than just the schedule of impact fees where they want a credit or they want special assessment. Or they want to claim they are exempt or otherwise. And and then I do have a form that can be used where they certify the square footage of a building and that's important for commercial. As well as the intended use. And and we run into situations where we have these different categories. And sometimes a developer is builds a building and they're not quite sure how it's going to be, it's going to be marketed for potential different kinds of uses. And we've got a format to deal with that also.
So Bill, are you saying then that the fire districts are going to be completing that upfront? Is that who is completing that information?
Yeah, we would process that information, the administrator in each of the fire districts, depending on where the subject building permit is. If, if, if they're not paying just the standard scheduled fee.
So what does that process look like? Because you won't know that they're even applying for anything until after they come to us for a building.
You're, oh, excuse me, the building in, the, the building department would think. If they're claiming they shouldn't pay a fee or they're claiming that they need a credit or on and on and on, then the, the building department refers them to the administrator of the impact fees of the fire district. And it's their responsibility to process that. And then, now the fee payer has an option to pay the fee and then protest it. Which means it goes to the administrator, but then you can issue the building permit, they've paid the fee and so on. They have that option under law as well as under the provisions of your ordinance. But, yeah, you folks don't have to worry about, nor is the building department's going to be responsible for administering any of those kinds of requests.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Okay, any more questions, any more comments?
Mr. Chairman Commissioners, fire chiefs, I have this on the agenda for three o'clock next Monday. For the resolution to dissolve the district and the oath of offices for the new EMS district commissioners.
Good news. We could see you guys one more time.
I have no doubt we'll work on projects together.
Thank you, Bill, for all your great help.
Well, thank you, it's been a pleasure working with you all and we'll pick this up next Monday. Hopefully, we'll be close to a fair to complete. And then in the meantime. I don't know, Douglas, who your point people are, but you probably want to check with the auditor and check with your insurance carrier, just a couple of those points to see. What they have to advise you about.
I definitely do.
And we can work.
I, I will do my best, I mean, it's going to be short turnaround. With it being a holiday week, so I will attempt to do that on Tuesday.
Will you, don't you have the bid, no, you don't have a bid for the auditor, do you? At least know we paid last year.
Three thousand, yeah.
We'll be okay, we don't work. Okay.
Happy Thanksgiving, everyone.
Thanks, everyone.
Happy, thank you. Bye bye.
Bye bye.
Bye chief.
I hate to do this to everybody, but we're going to go into an executive session next, so everybody's kind of have to. Get out, good to see everyone.
Thanks, appreciate it.
Thank you for the card, that was really very nice.
Thank you, guys.
Happy Thanksgiving.
This is for the commissioners to sign? But we did that.
On the agenda, did we not approve it yet?
We approved the intergovernmental agreement, normally we have the big joint meeting with the fire commissioners.
Yeah.
But then we have all these documents that our commissioners sign or our chair.
Can I see one?
Can we actually see them before we have to sign things?
I think probably, unfortunately, probably need to just be reviewed by Oki.
I would like to know what I'm signing.
Oh, can you leave with us?
The church, the commissioners are going to be making the decision, I'm not going to be making this decision, but I think that they'll want to make sure that these in fact.
I want to, I want to read whatever I sign and I'm just not one that will sign anything that comes.
Hasbrook? Yeah, I think, I think they'll leave them with us and we'll try and do that as a. We, we just never got them. Oak, can you come here a sec, please? No, 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 it's all right, it's all right, it's just a matter of not violating open meaning laws. We have the old agreements that we talked about, the resolutions. And they want me to sign them, it's not on the agenda, should we wait?
Yes, wait.
Okay. So if you leave with me or Doug.
Chief is indicating that.
We approved it, but we never signed anything.
Oh, we had the big joint meeting with the fire districts and approved all the intergovernmental.
So this has already been on an agenda as an action item?
And this is just McColl's, we still don't have Donley's or Cascade's.
If this has already been on an agenda, it's not a problem.
Well, you should have signed it that day, we just didn't have it.
Do you remember when it was on the agenda?
Okay, let me just take a look at the media minutes real quick.
This, when we had the, excuse me, when we had the public hearing. Is that establish the joint meetings, consider a motion to author a chairman of LA County to conduct a joint meeting?
Oh, and it talks about an administrative fee too. For us to collect it, did we ever even talk about that? Thousand dollars per impact fee ought to be close enough, I think. How much you got in your wallet?
All that I received from Cascade was resolutions. I did not receive anything that we were supposed to sign.
I think we better go through these before we sign them. Because we've got to come up with an administrative fee to collect the impact. For the fire districts.
That was never determined.
For impact.
Yeah, absolutely, if that's something that the county is wanting to.
We have established that by resolution. No, I don't. I don't know if they have to be involved. Did we even talk about a fee?
Okay, and going back, I'm just, I'll, I'll have to review the minutes, but the only thing that was approved by the commissioners. To adopt the resolution. Mr. Mike, no further discussion, motion passed to adopt resolution number twenty four dash zero three to author the chairman, commissioners and county clerk as the agents of the county. Execute the intergovernmental agreements for collection and expending of all development impact fees for each fire district system improvement. As identified in each of their capital improvement plans. Valley County Cascade Rule Fire Protection District Intergovernmental and Joint Powers Agreement. Valley County Donley Rule Fire Protection District Intergovernmental and Joint Power Agreement. Valley County McCall Fire Protection District Intergovernmental Agreement and Joint Powers Agreement. Of all agreement of all the collection and expenditure of development, impact fees for fire district system improvements. So now what you're bringing us is that joint power agreement. The commissioners have in fact approved that. The, the only question that I have is, I don't know if they would have, did you present that document at this October sixteenth meeting? That was included, okay. You're bringing it to us now.
For signature.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, Mr. Oki, it does in fact look like the commissioners approved this on the sixteenth.
Do you remember, was there any talk about administering fee for the county to collect that?
I think that's in the ordinance.
Remember what it is?
I don't think it was specified.
Well, and I said, you think I can remember that, are you kidding me?
I'll go look at my paperwork.
Yeah, if not, let us know, bring it down, next meeting or whenever.
Twenty seventh, I'll be here, I have a stack of them.
Stack of them, big pile. See what the boss says.
So this is the joint powers agreement.
Yeah, I, I don't have any of the joint powers. Yeah, I, I don't have any of the joint powers agreements from any of the fire districts.
You remember, did we talk about an administrative fee to collect the impact fees?
There says that there will be one, but nothing has been actually resolved.
You need to determine that by resolution.
Hundred percent.
Hundred percent.
They're percentage based, I don't know what they do.
Can charge it?
But we, we decided everybody was doing zero.
Will the administrative, will the administrative fee be on top of the impact fee in addition to, or taking a, taking a percentage of it?
So, there's di- different jurisdictions, there are different, some jurisdictions will charge like five dollars per transaction or whatever. Um, in the fire district, the cities, all three cities, uh, are charging administrative fee. There's plenty of other jurisdictions that charge a fee. So, I think if you wanna have a fee, a big county charges that we can negotiate with.
Uh, this is just your copy that I.
But I think the assumption was that it was zero.
Is there, in the ordinance, is there talk about that impact, or administrative fee? Cindy said it's in the ordinance.
Yet. This is a one-year contract, so, I mean. So how do we know? We're getting a hu, you know, I mean, we have far more permits than anybody else. So, we will be more impacted than any city is, especially Cascade or Donley. I mean, they have like ten permits a year. We have four hundred and something that he's gonna have to go through. So, I mean, our impact is much greater.
I think if the commissioners are in fact wanting to do this, we need to set a, a separate meeting.
Yeah.
I, I, this isn't a discussion I have right now. Absolutely, absolutely. That's what I would propose, sorry.
We put TBD. Or, and maybe it is waived.
So, are you sure that was in the ordinance?
No, not a hundred percent, but I remember reading that, and I did read the ordinance.
What was, I missed the conversation, I don't know. I know that Annette thinks there's an administrative fee. Yeah.
No, it says there can be. It says that in the ordinance, and I don't know what you're talking about, but it was never filled in. The cities are not charging an administrative fee. Because if we do, say we run the life of our capital improvement, impact fees, we charge, we get charged a fee, even if it's twenty months of transaction, it shortens the plan by fifty thousand dollars in fees. And I think our commissioners and City of Paul feel like it's double taxing, like, we're all trying to help EMS. This particularly is designed to help the EMS system, which owns responsibility.
I get that.
Yeah, it doesn't make sense. We don't charge for a lot of, when we collect taxes for the school, we don't charge for that.
Yes, but that is a separate collection method than there is with.
Your, uh, building, subsidizing, or the cost. That's a policy call for you guys to decide.
I don't know. I have not even thought about it, so it's kinda hard just to say, boom, for the rest of our eternity, we're not gonna, gonna do this. We're signing off on something.
There will be a cost, and that cost has to be covered by you collecting a building permit. Subsidizing this process. Copy costs, labor, you know, whatever.
So, is it legal, and this might be a question for Giegrey, but if the fee is five thousand dollars and we charge ten dollars on top of that, so now they pay five thousand and ten dollars, so it doesn't short the district at all? You can't do that.
You're certain?
I'm certain.
Okay. It's like the Access Idaho, Access Idaho convenience fee is on top of, that's three percent above the fee that, the fee that we charge.
Um, I'm wondering, Cindy, if we could do a little research this week, see what other counties are charging for this function?
Say again?
Have Cindy look and see what other counties are doing for this charge. I don't know how you figure it.
Annette, I've... Well, I need to look at the ordinance and see what the ordinance says. I, I know it's in there. But I was reading through it, my thought was that Doug would be charging that as a processing fee. We'll have to look at the ordinance.
So can we keep this, or do you want this back today?
No, we just need to.
Doug, do we have time to get this on next week?
You don't need to get it on, Mr. Chairman. It's already been approved, so I, I, I don't know.
We just need to have the discussion of what we're gonna charge, and I don't know how to come up with.
I think if you're gonna, if the commissioners are considering charging any, we're gonna have to go through this process again. Um, I, I don't know if the commissioners have the ability, and I'm gonna refer to.
It hasn't changed the joint powers agreement. The joint powers agreement already anticipates that you have the ability to charge an administrative fee if you so choose. So, the discussion that needs to be on the agenda for next week is, what is that percentage gonna be? Zero percent, one percent, what that's gonna be, then you set that percentage by rhythm. But, if it doesn't go on top of the, uh, impact fee, then obviously the fire districts would like to have a seat at the table to determine what that rate's gonna be. Fair to them, they, they should have, they should have a say.
Well, to make an informed decision, you know, I mean, we need to look at our fees and figure out how many are actually going to be, um, assessed a fee. I mean, if she's processing two hundred a year, I mean, how many is that a month? How much time does it really take to do that? You know, maybe it's negligible. Maybe it's not something we need to do, but just... I hate making decisions with five minutes to think about it. That's me. I, if we're setting policy moving forward, I mean, give me five minutes.
You got four left. Go.
No, I think the assumption when we had the joint meeting was that there was no fee to fill in. That's what the cities had done. I think if you wanna charge a fee, there needs to be a joint meeting.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely.
What do you guys think? I mean, I, what are you thinking?
I don't think we should charge. This is what government does.
Then you got two, so we don't have a problem.
I mean, we don't charge the schools to collect their money, we don't charge.
Through the tax levy, oh, it's totally different. Doesn't involve, you know, people on the ground floor.
Yeah, but Doug's still doing the work, the traders still doing the work. We charge for that?
All our impact fees come through us, back to them.
I would think there would be more, depends on Doug's side, or the traders.
If we were working a game where we're making sure everything pans out, none of us would be doing EMS transport.
Well, and that's a good point. That's a good point, Gary.
That's a good point.
Wave it off then.
Makes a better service.
Yeah, yeah. Zero?
I mean, I think commissioners, we, we should, I, I think it's an oversight, it probably should be put on in a, a future agenda.
Don't make that decision right now. Make that decision next week.
We can put it on an agenda.
Okay.
That, that's an open meeting, because you are making a policy decision, so have the discussion on the record. Make sure you have an agenda, all that sort of.
You'll do all that.
Actual stuff needs to, needs to happen, but for the purposes of signing that JPA, you can do that now if you feel comfortable doing it.
And then, but there's a blank spot for the administrative fee. Do I just put zero?
There is a blank spot?
Yes.
Map? Wait till next week then.
Okay.
You're not gonna plead it until next week anyway.
Are we, we're not in that big a rush, are we? So we're gonna keep this?
No, I haven't seen it. The only thing that I have from them is the resolution.
I think we need at least to talk to Annette about it and see, have a general discussion, but. We're making a decision that's not agenda. So we gotta wait.
I get that.
Yeah. But we can still come out with no charge. Just gotta do it legally.
Have it on at two thirty. Discussion decision regarding administrative fee for collection of impact fees for the fire districts.
Would you put another thing on there, please? Resolution, McColl Fire Department Resolution 2310, annexation of.
Can you please send me an email, and I'll get it on the agenda. Thank you.
Annexation of what? More ground?
They're gonna annex a portion of Adams County into their fire district, and you need to make a motion of awareness of this and agreement.
Are you bringing in C S H R warrant too?
White tail.
It's not white tail development.
Oh, man.
I'll send it to you, Doug, in five minutes.
That would be great.
Hey, we're still good. We're still good.
I wonder if the school district needs to do that. They actually had to run a, um, school district's election in Adams County for those two lots.
Really?
Yeah.
No, I think Valley County should annex that portion of Adams County.
Oh, we'd love to.
Thank you.
Yeah.
We don't want to. Brendage would love to have us do that.
No, it's not.
Right now, it's not right on my calendar.
We're gonna have.
Calendar's already getting booked up.
We're probably have continued conversations about that, because Red Ridge, as it develops, is happening now. It's gonna, it's gonna be awkward. It's kinda like starting Middleton and all their problems with.
It's not a problem.
It's a challenge. Which is a problem. It's an opportunity, it's different.
What we're gonna do with all the trash from Warren and C S H R is coming. Okay. Thanks, you guys. We'll, we'll figure it out.
Thanks.
Close the door when you're going out?
But this time, I'm gonna make the motion that we go into an executive session, right, Oco, 742061F, to communicate with legal counsel. We have a second.
Second.
Then move and seconded by roll call, please. Hi, Thompson.
How can I?
Hasbrook, I, and Doug will be in at three twenty-two.